He will be in a minute, if we could wait, that would be great.
We have to wait a minute? Is that what you're saying, that we should wait a minute?
We'll start.
We'll start. You start, okay. All right, Dr. Kol, please continue the closing statement.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to start with an apology, because I said there's no representative of Wattenfall AB here. And I had noticed a new face in the room, but my apologies, since I -- there's also no name tag, so I didn't know who you were. We have the General Counsel of Wattenfall AB, Ms. Anne Gennerstedt, here today. Apologies. Let me turn now to the response to question 11B. Accepting as a premise that a respondent was entitled to change its nuclear policy so as to return to the OEPVs and to introduce fixed shutdown dates for each nuclear power plant, what should respondent have done differently according to claimants? What factors should respondent have considered that would have led it to adopt a different approach to the determination of the shutdown date, i.e. not using the figures for utilization from the atom consents? Claimants have not responded to that this morning. They have just said Germany should have negotiated a shutdown with them. And you will recall my cross-examination of Professor Dolzer, that assuming that the FET standard were to require negotiations with companies and lobbyists, then indeed the critics of investor-state arbitration and of investor protection would be right, because that would actually make the legislative power and the right to regulate to something that is on the bargaining table. And most emphatically, this is not what the Energy Charter Treaty requires. Also, they complained they were not heard in the run-up to the Thirteenth Amendment. As you will also recall from the opening, that is not true. The co-owner of all of the three power plants at issue, E.ON, was heard in the legislative process, even though that is not required by the Constitution. Wattenfall also sent a letter to the legislator stating its views. That is sufficient to be heard, even though there's no right to be heard for the legislative process. And you will also recall that I pointed out to Professor Dolzer that there was a witness statement in the record by Professor Martina Schreuer about the Ethics Commission and the legislative process, but claimants chose not to call her. Now, I'm trying to answer the question that the tribunal actually put in 11B. What factors should the respondent have considered that would have led it to adopt a different approach to the determination of shutdown dates, i.e. not using the figures for utilization from the atom consents? No other method, and that is for a good reason. I put on the screen Exhibit 108, and there's also Exhibits 107 and 190 of respondent, which shed some light on the discussions of the nuclear power operators that were trying to overcome the 2002 phase-out and were pushing for new -- sorry, 109, not 190, I missed -- there's a typo on the slide -- overcome the 2002 phase-out and were shooting for the so-called lifetime extensions. And I told you also earlier, you will recall that, that for certain plants, it was a bit of a game to push out the survival of the OEPVs, i.e. not to use up the OEPVs, before a lifetime extension would be decreed. And that in particular affected Brunspittel, which although, as evidenced by a slide from E.ON, this is T4, Slide 13, so Tomauske exhibit, there was a decision to shut it down already in 2008. That is in the footnote, which is not legible on this slide, but maybe on your bigger printout. And let's look what the witness said in the proceedings, that's Transcript 1148, 12 to 22, and 1149, 1 to 3. And I don't recall now which expert that was, I have to say. He was point, and it reports on the cross-examination of Professor Tomauske. He was pointed to a footnote in an E.ON presentation which had the 2008 date. Does that ring a bell with you? Answer: I don't know why. No, it doesn't ring a bell. I don't know why they would be pointing to E.ON. In E.ON presentation, Brunspittel is controlled by Wattenfall. Well, you've seen the Articles of Association of Brunspittel earlier, that's C9. And I've also read with you together those decisions reserved for the shareholders' meeting that require unanimity. And the shutting down of the plant is certainly one that would have required unanimity. Let me now answer the first part of the question. What, if anything, should Germany have done differently? And Professor Low was trying to get an answer from Mr. Kazmarek on that. That's Transcript 1176, lines 12 to 18. Question: Have you got any experience of other governments imposing phased shutdowns of this kind? Mr. Kazmarek said, "I can't think of anything off the top of my head, certainly not in the nuclear area, and not even in other areas such as mining, where they have done such a phase-out like that." He was then questioned again, Transcript 1176, lines 19 to 22, 1177, 1 to 8. Question: Have you got any experience of a government having a new policy in relation to energy production, which has the same kind of impact upon the financial position of the suppliers as this phased shutdown has? And after pointing to Peru, Mr. Kazmarek says, "But nothing really to the real heart of your question, which is to shut down. Question goes on, 1179, 5 to 22, 180, 1 to 3, and 7 to 9. And Professor Low asked, "Or is it your impression, your experience, that governments simply do the best they can?" Answer: I think they sometimes try to do the best they can. Again, the question. I really asked an inexact question. What I'm getting at is, is there any benchmark of this kind of due diligence that should be done by a government in making assessment of the financial impact of this kind? Is there anything that you can point to as an international standard which might be applicable? Answer by Mr. Kazmarek: I think in terms of phase-outs, the only thing I can point to is the EU standards on stranded costs. And a little later, Hungary has been criticized but has mostly been exonerated in the cases that it has done that in that regard. So there is no, really no, international benchmark. And Germany was trying to do the best it can. And it did, as I pointed you out to with the calculation. It used the reference production volumes, which had been agreed originally in 2002, reconfirmed in the run-up to the lifetime extensions in the Development Fund Agreement, and that were a neutral benchmark, because the manipulation of the running speed, if you will, of the plants in the run-up to the lifetime extensions were excluded. Had one taken historical averages, those decisions by the operators, say, to have a revision in the run-up to the lifetime extensions, not to use up OEPVs, or to minimize the output of the nuclear fuel tax, they would have distorted the figures. So at the time of the Thirteenth Amendment, the reference production volumes was the best available figure. And that is what international law requires, that at the time of the measure, the legislator has to make a good-faith decision, a good-faith legislation and regulation. And that is what Germany did. The impact calculation, which you've then seen from our experts, exposed, taking into account the most recent available information, was to validate this decision, to prove that actually the predictions of the legislator, which has no guarantee duty that the regulation will turn out exactly how it planned, in retrospect actually made sense. That is more than most legislators do, and for international law not even required, if you make a good-faith regulation at the time. And a few years later, it turns out, that wasn't a good idea. That is not something that a legislator would be faulted for, because nobody requires a legislator to be a clairvoyant. If that was the standard, or if that was possible, maybe the world would be a better place. Let me now turn to question 12. Tribunal's question: In deciding upon claimants' claims under the umbrella clause, is the nature and status of the atom consents to be judged under German law, some other law, or a factual manner? First of all, even Professor Dolzer, who was pretty recalcitrant in the cross-examination, at Transcript 1482, 1 to 10, admits that in order for there to be an umbrella clause claim, you have to have a thing that can be elevated, i.e. an obligation. An obligation by definition has to be a binding obligation in order to be an obligation under the Energy Charter Treaty. Question: The treaty needs an obligation which exists independent of the treaty, doesn't it? Answer: It is an obligation independent of the treaty. That's correct. Question: And if there's no such obligation? Answer: Otherwise, there would be no -- nothing to elevate it. You are correct. So if -- question: So if there's nothing to be elevated, it cannot be an umbrella clause? Answer: By definition, Transcript 1482, 1 to 10. And Professor Papier, in his presentation, again made it quite clear, that's Transcript 2376, 2 to 14. He says, "It is also not a point of contention that the federal government, independent of its lack of legal personality, cannot obligate the legislature to pass such a law. Such an obligation would be unconstitutional, especially when considering the principle of democracy, the principles of democracy, the separation of powers, the mutual respect amongst the constitutional organs, and since it would be passing over the Bundestag against the principle of federalism." Bundesrat, I think he said, rather than Bundestag. A legal binding of the legislature is not only excluded, but the federal government could also not obligate itself towards third parties not to assume its rights to enter bills into the legislature. Indeed, he continues, 2376, 21, 22, 2377, lines 1 to 7. "Such an obligation would also be incompatible with the principle of the rule of law, which contains the absolute prohibition of a divestment or a sale of sovereign rights for the benefits of third parties or private parties. A disposition of constitutional sovereign rights, which includes the right of the federal government to enter bills into the legislature in the Bundestag for the benefits of private parties, is impossible legally." So, one thing you need to be clear with when he talks about constitutional sovereign rights. We're not in the discussion that you sometimes hear from states, treaties are a bad thing because they curtail sovereignty. That's not what Professor Papier is talking about here. He is talking about the competence of the government to legislate. And you will recall from my cross-examination of Professor Kischel that we have the principle of the free mandate. It's the holiest provision for any parliamentarian. His voice may not be sold or bought. And obviously, you also recall the discussions, for example, in the OECD on the bribery of parliamentarians, et cetera. This is a principle which also international law treats us wholly. And this is what he refers to when he talks about sovereign rights. He's not talking about the ability of a state to enter into an international treaty, such as the Energy Charter Treaty. I just want this to be clear, especially as he was misquoted by claimants in the closing. And you will also recall that, in response to a question from the tribunal, he was differentiating between certain utterances in the atom consents, which just referred to the government as an administrative authority, and such which related to it as an organ in the context of the legislative process. And it was in that context, this is Transcript 2401 to 7, that he pointed out, if you are in the part of administration, that's one thing. And then he says, "And on the other hand, if you have to look at the portions of the atom consents that refer to political aspects, legislature, future legislature." He then explains it in more detail at 2401, 3 to 15. And he says that, obviously, you have the principle that the government doesn't have -- the Bundesregierung does not have legal personality. And he's -- but he's more nuanced. Even setting aside this point that there's no legal personality, in the area of administrative law, there could be what also Professor Low pointed to, a self-commitment to execute and take advantage of the administrative powers in a certain way. Yes, the form of the atom consents would have prevented that. That kind of binding would have to have occurred in an öffentlich-rechtlicher Vertrag, such as the Development Fund Agreement. But in principle, at least, a binding commitment on the exercise of administrative powers would have been unthinkable. A commitment to forego your right to legislate, that would have been, as Professor Papier puts it, completely unthinkable.
So what did the government think it was doing when it signed an agreement which said, "Subject to compliance with the requirements under nuclear law, the federal government will ensure the undisturbed operation of its -- of the installations?"
The atom consents, which was a product of long negotiations, and you will remember that it was only signed after the constitutional complaints on its capacity to actually bind were concluded, and with the result, no, this is not binding, basically you can sign this. On the administrative side, frankly, I don't know. But I would, with Professor Papier, not rule it out, that the mindset of the administration was to make a declaration that this is how we are going to enforce our laws on the administrative level. If that would be a commitment for the purposes of the Energy Charter Treaty, would be a separate exercise, which the parties have not undertaken in the last four years. But at least, it would not have been -- would not be such an outrageous proposition as the proposition of the binding of the -- for the purposes of the legislative process.
Is that speculation, or is that the respondent's case? No, it's an important point, and because of the way you led up to it, I think we should get it clear on the record.
This is a point which was only aired in the last two days, and obviously, we did not do any research to it. So this is my statement as the lawyer that has no independent factual knowledge, because that was a question which was not aired in the last four years. I am not making a binding commitment on the -- for the government. And Professor Papier then concludes, this is 2408, 22, 2409, 1 to 5, and he makes clear that the famous, you cannot hang your hat, or more literally, you cannot bind a rope on which you want to climb up on it, that this decision related to the administrative law portion of the atom consents. So actually, that portion, which he described earlier, would permit, before the background of democracy and separation of powers, in principle, a binding of the administrative authorities. And even in that area, where it would have not been so outrageous to postulate a binding effect, the Constitutional Court said, "No." And the Constitutional Court said, "No," before the phase-out law was implemented, and before the final signatures were effected. So that means everybody knew. And you will, including the nuclear power companies with their large legal departments, you will also recall the article by Gerald Hennhöfer, who at the time was negotiating the atom consents on behalf of the energy companies. He was stating, and I quoted that in my opening, that everybody knew it was not binding. Now, if everybody knew it's not binding, then obviously, that was not something that was disputed between the parties. And you will also recall from the cross-examination of Professor Kischel, that they took out the arbitration board, that in the Eckpunkte Papier, it was also contemplated that this would be an öffentlich-rechtlicher Vertrag, which was not what was done. You have seen me take him through the signature pages, and to the fact that not all nuclear power-producing energy companies were signatories to the atom consents. And you've also seen me go through with him through the Development Fund Agreement, showing how each of the operating companies, down to the OHGs, were signatories, and each of them abiding by the signature rules applicable to them, which in most cases requires more than one signature. I would then move to question 13. Following from the answer to question 11 above, how would each specific change identified in response to that question bear upon the question of quantum? In other words, what damage did each respondent's alleged failures cause claimants? It bears reminding here that claimants bear the burden of proof. For each measure, for the alleged causal effect of such measure, and the measure of quantum, for each of the elements, and the interlink between each other. And they have not met this burden of proof. No calculations, no new calculations would be able to have been presented, because we're now past the time for new submissions, and they would be precluded. And then you will also see, and remember from my cross-examination of Mr. Kazmarek, that his model does not do what he pretends it does. Mr. Kazmarek, questioned by Professor Robert, stated, that's Transcript 993, lines 18 to 994, lines 14. He said, "Yes, we have prepared an Excel model in this case, which has a switch. So it contains all of the appendices and other underlying analysis that we've done, but it has an interface on the homepage, so you can basically, as I said, choose whether or not the lifetime extension is a breach. The NFT is a breach, whether certain claimants are not proper claimants, and you can make any adjustment and come up with any number that you wish based upon your ultimate decision." That was false. First of all, it does not allow you to differentiate between separate dates for valuation and the several valuation dates, possible dates, which you were giving in the questions, 11 March, 14 March, 6 August. Nor does it indeed allow you to do an exposed appreciation as of 31st December 2015. Nor does it allow you to adjust selecting electricity prices. Remember, I asked him whether he had put in the real, actual electricity prices, and he said, "No, he didn't play with his model," or her model in this case. Nor does it allow you to put in different utilization rates. And it does not allow you to quantify the impact of the Fukushima accident. He told you, and claimants told you, it was safer to rely on Exante. Even if you were not to agree with this principle, and bear in mind, Exante always has a period of prognosis, of assumptions, between the valuation -- Exante evaluation date and the date of the award, where for that period in exposed, we have hard, reliable data. And therefore, as a principle, exposed should give you the better and more realistic appreciation. But even if you were to put the hypothesis that an Exante calculation should be performed, he has not done a true Exante calculation. And I will come to that in a moment. You remember, and this was obviously an exercise which for lawyers is completely painful, to look at an Excel sheet, and we tried to do this exercise with him on the NFT in relation to the Brunspittel volumes. And what you could see is that after switching the toggles, the value of Brunspittel is incorrectly calculated. Despite the fact that the OEPVs in Mr. Kazmarek's scenario are sold in 211 and 212, his model does not account for the NFT to have any effect on that value, meaning that it overstates the value of the values of the OEPVs, and therefore overstates the damages. And correcting this mistake would have an effect of 210 million before taxed. He then tried to explain his error, saying, "Well, they would have been sold in 2011, but only used after 2017, after the nuclear fuel tax would have passed." I did not find that particularly credible, especially as in the sales or transfers we have seen, there was not such a big time lapse between the transfer and the usage of those volumes. Also, you will remember that Ms. Harden critiqued Mr. Kazmarek on the issue in her second report, and still at the time of the cross-examination, this seemed to be very new to him, even though I had established with him before that he was regarding the model as 100% of his own work, and that he was standing behind it. And you will see the text, and can read it for yourself, on his manipulation of the sales, and when the volumes would be used. That's 1162, lines 12 to 22. I turn now to the next question, 14. Were specific investments made by claimants in relation to the NEPV's? Again, burden of proof. The burden is on claimants, not on respondent. And indeed, no investments were made. The NEPV's were, as I called it several times, an ephemeral windfall, and were sooner extinguished than created. They were in fact enforced only for mere three months. And it's actually confirmed, and this is one of the few things in this arbitration which is not disputed, that no investments were made. The Navigant model shows that no capital expenditures were made between 14 December 210 and 14 March 211. See Navigant Appendix C through N in the native format, NAV15, 15A, and 110. And in his witness statement, Dr. Kleen explained, quote, "We could not be certain that this lifetime extension would be the case. Therefore, we only implemented investments that we considered necessary or commercially acceptable even without a lifetime extension." Witness statement, three claimants, paragraphs 6, 11, and 10. I see there's a question coming to you.
There's a question, yes. If I understand Claimant's case correctly on NEPV's, is that the investments were made in the period two thousand and four, two thousand and five to two thousand and nine, ten, in anticipation that the nuclear power policy would change? Maybe this is not the time to address it, but
No, no, I'm very happy to address this.
You can address it in your proceeding briefs as well.
We may also do that, but I'm actually prepared. So, I've just put on the statement by Dr. Klein. I think that puts it to rest, that he says, "We only implemented investments we considered necessary or commercially acceptable even without a lifetime extension." So, they were made not in reliance or not even in the hope for a lifetime extension. Secondly, and that is something which has been an issue in other investment treaty cases, pre-investment costs, which is a similar concept, are not protected. Mihaly, for example, and other cases. If you are making expenditures in the hope or in preparation for, where the state has not created a legal basis for that, they were clearly not made in reliance on expectations. They were made perhaps with a view to a speculative development, but such things are not protected even if the speculation later on proves to be correct. If that answers the question, I would move on to question fifteen.
Thank you.
What is the legal basis for Claimant's chosen valuation date of fourteen March two thousand and eleven? And that is very simple, there is no legal basis. What is the applicable standard? And that responds to a question by Professor Lo at twenty-three fifty-one, nineteen to twenty-one, and twenty-three fifty-four, three to five. Professor Lo, just a couple of questions to clarify my thinking and make sure that I'm understanding the main points. One of the points I get from the testimony of you and Mr. Kazmarek is that exposed and ex ante analysis can both be precise and perfectly effective answers but to different questions. And later on, so the question is, what the legal test is for? And I've heard tribunals complain about the five-hundred-and-seventeenth hard copy version of the Horchov factory case, which was submitted with the legal authorities, preferably in print, one-sided of both language versions. Sometimes, however, it bears reading those old cases. And Horchov factory is a particularly instructive case and a case which was decided by the PCIJ in a fashion on the basis of a treaty which would probably astonish the most pro-investor arbitrators today. The underlying treaty concerned the divestment, the rollback of German investment in what had, after a referendum, become Polish territory. So actually, an anti-investment treaty, so to speak. And on that basis, the PCIJ determined that the taking of the factory at Horchov was not in line with the Versailles Treaty and the nineteen-twenty-three German-Polish Treaty. And they say in the famous part at forty-seven, this is RL one-oh-eight, and you know this sentence at Nordheim, that it has to re-establish the situation which would in all probability, in all probability, have existed had the act not been committed. This is the part which is always cited. I take it as a proposition for the fact that Horchov requires you to determine a delta. And the delta is most precisely determined if you look at the real facts. And the only exception for that is, which by the way, Horchov didn't apply, but many modern AI tribunals apply, is to apply the test for the lawful expropriation against compensation, also to the non-compensated taking in breach. However, the expropriation provision, and for example, thirteen of the Energy Charter Treaty, but also others, they really constitute an exception to the general Horchov principle. And the exception is validated because an expropriation at its core is a forced sale, if done legally, an exchange of the asset that is taken for the value of this asset. And with the taking over of the asset, the state assumes the ownership position of the former owner. That means also the perils of the asset, the ownership risks. And that is why it's fair to stop time at the point of the taking. Because from that on, the state, which has appropriated the asset, has the ownership risk. Interestingly, Horchov did not apply the standard because the underlying treaty did not even, and as you know, you've heard me say that on other occasions, the otherwise lawful expropriation on the basis of Horchov is a fiction because the underlying treaty did not require compensation. And the Horchov decision states quite clearly, this is an exception under international law, that an expropriation can be lawful without compensation. So that makes this new theory in investment arbitration somewhat shaky. But Horchov is interesting and I took the time actually to reread it yesterday when we were putting together the closing. And I was very surprised because this case of nineteen twenty-eight actually addresses the question of the valuation date. And they continue, this is at page forty-eight. Then involves the obligation to restore the undertaking and, if this is not possible, pay its value at the time of the indemnification, exposed. And if you look more closely, I've not put it on the screen, when they were giving instructions to the experts, they had two scenarios. Both scenarios were exposed scenarios, including the most up-to-date value and data. So Horchov factory employs an exposed valuation. This is the slide to which I think I spoke before, that an exposed valuation also has the advantage that it uses hard data from the time of the alleged breach to the time of the award. That's a transcript eleven, ten, one to ten. It's actually a very nice quote with five ones. But in addition to there not being a legal basis, there's also no economic basis for a valuation date of fourteen March. And I recall the discussion between the tribunal and Claimants this morning at twenty-five fifty, lines eight, nine, and line twenty-one. Claimants were making the point, again, and quite falsely, that because the OPVs are not modeled by Ms. Harden to be sold now, but in the future, they have no present value. And the president pointed out quite rightly that they have an inherent value. And this is also the concept of any DCF method valuation, that you assess the present value of an asset from future cash flows. If Claimants were right, then DCF would not be a proper valuation method. And any asset that only creates assets, cash flows in the future, would have to be valued at zero. But it was, I'd actually, there's even more to it because there is an inherent contradiction in Mr. Kazmarek's valuation. And this is a transcript eleven oh-six, lines fifteen to twenty-one, eleven oh-seven, one to eight. He stated, when asked about the value of the power plants post-Fukushima on his valuation date of fourteen March, "Of course, the day or two days after Fukushima, I don't think anybody would have wanted to sell their nuclear power plants." I then asked him, well, the seller, yes, but what about the buyer? Since we have the definition of fair market value. And he said, "I think that's fair, yes. I don't think many people would have decided to go out searching to buy plants or to sell plants two days after the accident." By his doctrine that if you only can sell the volumes or the plants in the future, they need to be valued at zero. So, if he's hold to his own yardstick, it means that as of his valuation dates, the plants were worth zero. Evidently, that's not what he does. He attributes billions and billions to them. Why have Claimants chosen fourteen March instead of any other date? And they were pointed to it by the president, that's transcript one-two-one-six to one-two-four, sixteen of Claimant's opening. Question, because the expropriation, was it the thirteenth amendment? Answer by Mr. Anderson, it was the thirteenth amendment, yes. That would suggest a valuation date even in an ex ante in August, not in March. Then you will also recall my discussion, and we are coming to that, about why not eleven March or ten, why ten March and not eleven March? And moreover, the interplay of ten March, eleven March, and fourteen March, which even after four years is still puzzling to me. There was the other, and respondent has made this point at Nordheim in this arbitration, that Claimants are trying to value but for Fukushima because, for example, they were also not affected by the moratorium, which also unfortunately is often published in the press. Those two plants, Brunsbüttel and Krümmel, were standing still at the time. And again, I'm referring to Claimant's opening, one-two-one, line six, to one-two-four, sixteen. And then Mr. Anderson said, "It is, I think, Mr. Kazmarek can explain the rather complicated procedure of discounting and upcounting. We say that the date is the thirteenth amendment, but we say that the only date at which the valuation is uninfluenced by Fukushima and its consequences was possible by the eleventh March." That's the opening, uninfluenced by Fukushima, not by the measures. And he was then asked by the president, the question here is, what is the measure? Mr. Anderson, the measure is the thirteenth amendment. Then he confirmed, being questioned, would it then not be that the moratorium is the measure in your submission? Mr. Anderson, no. And again, we are not challenging the moratorium. We are not relying on that as a measure, but... And then he goes on to explain what I don't think is explainable.
But, Komrade, I thought that later on, they came with an explanation, being the Claimants, on the basis of Article thirteen, paragraph one, third paragraph, which says, well, and I quote, I don't know whether you have the text in front of you.
Thirteen of the Energy Charter Treaty, I think I fairly know by heart.
Okay, and then I read it to you. Such compositions shall amount to the fair market value of the investment expropriated at the time immediately before the expropriation or impending expropriation became known in such a way as to affect the value of the investment. And what I understand to be, the Claimant's case is that they choose the fourteenth of March two thousand and eleven because they say, at that date, the expropriation was impending.
First of all, and
I hope I reflect it correctly about the Claimants here.
So, first of all, you've seen me go through Horchov. I don't think that outside a taking of the asset, you know, and by taking, I mean not a destruction of the asset, but an appropriation of the asset, where the ownership risk of the asset shifts from the investor to the state, that thirteen is an appropriate standard. I know that many arbitral tribunals have done that. Dogmatically, I think it's wrong. Dogmatically, and I think this is one point where Professor Schreuer actually agrees with me, whenever you have an expropriation without compensation, brackets, outside the Versailles Treaty, which is a different animal, close brackets, and expropriation without compensation is per se unlawful and triggers Horchov, which is exposed difference method. Only if you have a lawful expropriation against compensation, the state enjoys the benefit of being limited to the value of the asset at the time of the expropriation. Thirteen of the ECT and the similar provisions in other treaties work both ways. There are actually also protections for the state because even in a lawful expropriation against compensation, suddenly the value of the investment skyrockets, the investor can't claim for it. So, that is, there's a two sides to the coin. The other, and I think you were getting to that, is that this is the Claimant's case, but I don't think they can have their cake and eat it. The legal process in the run-up to the thirteenth amendment wasn't concluded until the thirteenth amendment was passed. And you can't say that on fourteenth March, at the moratorium, there was already an expropriation known to the public and in the offing. And you will remember that after some discussion in the summer, the protocol of Chancellor Merkel's testimony in the Biblis parliamentary inquiry was admitted to the record. And she used very often the German term innehalten, stop, to reflect, in the immediate aftermath of Fukushima, to stop and think. There was no expropriation in the offing as of fourteen March.
Your submission works, I think, if you use the distinction between unlawful and lawful expropriation, which would place then the compensation outside the Article thirteen, the treaty text. And you fall back on Horchov?
Nope. Actually, I'm an opponent, a very strong opponent, of the doctrine of otherwise lawful expropriation and of the distinction that an expropriation which is in the public interest, due process, ta-da-da, but without compensation is a so-called otherwise lawful expropriation. Because I think it's a legal foundation and those who propose it are relying on Horchov and the Versailles Treaty, and they didn't read the underlying treaty, which is unfortunately a common mistake. So, my submission is different. If you have a taking over of an asset, i.e. if the ownership risk goes from one party to the other party, you have, you can apply a similar standard to thirteen even in the absence of compensation, if that's for the benefit of the investor. So, in that, the principal rule is, if you have an expropriation which doesn't, is not, you know, a formal expropriation against compensation, you have as a basic rule, Horchov. Horchov can work in both ways. If the value of the investment skyrockets after the taking, the investor can take that increase. But in any event, it should not be worse off than had the state acted legally, meaning conducted a transaction as of the time of the taking. So in that case, if the value of the investment falls, the investor should not get less than at the time of the taking under Article thirteen. But those cases only apply in a situation where there's a takeover of an asset, not where there's an alleged interference with the enjoyment of an asset through a regulation, where the asset remains with the owner and investor but is arguably devalued through regulation, in which case you only have Horchov as a measure of determining the delta, what would have happened without the regulation and what has happened with the regulation.
I ask you again for the record, and is that the respondent's position?
I ask you again for the record, and is that the respondent's position, or is that an argument that you're putting out as a lawyer? And I ask because it's obviously a position that could have implications for the respondent in all sorts of other contexts, quite apart from this arbitration.
My power of attorney is limited to this arbitration, but it is the position we're taking in this arbitration.
So does that mean it's the respondent's position?
In this arbitration.
Yeah.
I'm not creating any presumption for any further cases.
Right.
Does that answer the question? Do you want me to continue or? Okay. I have one further to say in relation to that question. And we were looking just at the dates fourteen March to six August. But what we've criticized throughout this arbitration was that they did not, that they picked for the, for the futures, for the electricity prices, ten March. And that was at the time, that is clearly pre-Fukushima. And in addition to my explanation that, you know, in the light of the effects, sorry, in the light of the accident of Fukushima, there was a moment of stopping to think. There was, again, no expropriation offing in March, two thousand and eleven, which would, even if you disagree with me on the construction of the standard, would trigger a, a point in time as described in Article thirteen of the Energy Charter Treaty. Let's look therefore, more importantly, why have they not provided, why have they, haven't they provided a, well, let's look and see that they have not provided an evaluation as of fourteen March. You will again recognize the slide from the opening. He picked a date of ten March, whereas the moratorium, which did not affect Krümmel and Brunspittel...
He is Mr. Kozmaric?
Mr. Kozmaric, yes.
Yeah, okay, well, for the...
For the record, I'm sorry. And claimants, by extension, picked a valuation date of fourteen, but used pricing information of ten, arguing that the price, the trading of futures on eleven March was affected by the moratorium. That is, that is obviously false. And the effect of that is a difference of one hundred and thirty million, which is not trivial. You will also recall from the opening that of, at the time where claimants are arguing the moratorium was already leaked to the public, that this could not have been in the first case, because at that time, the close of markets in Europe on eleven March, not even the people close to Fukushima knew of the catastrophe. Indeed, the explosion in Unit One only happened fifteen hours later. That is, that is fifteen hours, which show that, you know, even if the people that would have basically felt the shockwaves didn't know, how would, how would the markets in Europe know? And as I said, the next slide gives you a different depiction of the same data. Another issue in this arbitration was if futures can predict the future, and if so, what part of the future? This is transcript eleven, twenty-six, line nine to sixteen. He relies in that, he being Mr. Kozmaric, on concluded transactions and futures contracts. Let me take you to his cross-examination, eleven, twenty-one, lines six to seventeen. Question, so the futures are for a certain timeframe, and it's easier to predict the near future than the far future? Answer by Mr. Kozmaric, I completely agree with that. And then I asked him if the trading volumes would be higher for near-term futures than long-term futures. And he said, and there are very few people that deal in long-term futures. Sorry, I asked, and there are very few people that deal in long-term futures. And he confirmed, answer, there are people who still deal in long-term futures, yes. And I pressed him harder, because he was saying that asking prices alone by a so-called market maker could be price determinative. And I put him, to him, the definition of fair market value as a transaction between buyer and seller. And if there's only an ask price, but not a put price, I think is the equivalent, you only have fifty percent of the fair market value essentially. And he said, I would look at the ask price of the future contract, that would tell me what the value is. He was again asked, if you observe that there are no offers, but no one to take up the offers, that might mean nobody wants to put their money at the price for what the time, for that time in the future. Correct. Answer, if there are no people willing to buy or sell at the time in the future, then yes, there's no trades that take place. Transcript eleven, twenty-two, sixteen to twenty-two, eleven, twenty-three, one to fourteen. And indeed, their own exhibit, the Felix base, the basis, which is the basis for the data, based on the EX data depicted in this demonstrative, they show that past twenty-four months, or thirty-six, I think, twenty-four to twenty-six, there are no trades. This is transcript twenty-one, forty-six, twelve to six, fourteen, by Mr. Cohen. Question to Mr. Cohen, so are there any trades supporting Mr. Kozmaric's curve after twenty-fourteen? Answer by Dr. Cohen, I don't believe so, no. Again, Mr. Kozmaric, eleven, thirty-six, six to eleven, he says, and the fact that the projections didn't turn out to be correct, and it's not mine, it was the market's, doesn't mean my valuation of the plants are wrong. I mean frankly, my valuation of the plants are absolutely correct. So basically, if reality shows that the market is completely wrong, and therefore the valuation has no connection to reality, he still thinks that this is a absolutely correct valuation. I think you've also seen this slide several times, which just show how big the delta from two thousand and eleven to, up to two twenty about, is between the first until two thousand and fifteen, the real data and Mr. Kozmaric's projection, and then the forecast by the Aurora model, and as compared to Mr. Kozmaric's futures continued by inflation. I think this shows pretty clearly the problem with ex ante. Ex ante requires you to be necessarily blind between the date of the measure and the date of the award, which, as I said, I would only condone such deviation from reality if there was an exchange of hands of the asset. So we're not talking about an indirect expropriation through a destruction of value, but a taking over of the ownership risk. Only then you could argue that this is possible, but not in a case where you're operating on Horsov on the basis of a differential. By the way, that problem between expectations at the time of the, of the taking in Horsov and what really turned out, that is actually also discussed in this whole decision. So also on that, on that point, it makes extremely interesting reading. Now, claimants have told you that, and I believe they also showed you this figure in their closing, that you are not allowed to use exposed data in an ex ante calculation. But to the extent it fit him, this is exactly what Mr. Kozmaric did. Some of the graphs you see in his, in his depiction start, for example, in two thousand and fifteen, so they're clearly after his valuation date, they're...
If I understood correctly, the valuation was made, in the various dates you see in the box, two thousand and eleven, two thousand and ten, but they value by futures, and then the start of the valuation is then at two thousand and fifteen. That's the way I understood the explanation.
I don't think so. I think, as I understand it, if you look at the figures in the brackets...
Not my, what I say that I understand, is what I say but understand that the claimants have told the...
Okay, we have a different understanding of it. We believe that these are... Okay, so I'm now, I think I now have the understanding that the more mathematically talented persons on my team say that the date in brackets is the date of the making of the study, which in case of the two thousand and, June, two thousand and twelve, projection is post-valuation date. So you have at least one that is exposed, and that is the Potsdam Institute. So with this, and also less, less exposed, but still exposed, there's the prognos of July, two thousand and eleven, and there are actually two prognos of July, two thousand and eleven. So they are also past the March fourteen, two thousand and eleven, valuation date. They are not as much exposed as the two thousand and twelve one, but they are still exposed. The next slide shows, which my more mathematically talented colleagues have figured out, that the data points in, in the graphs are actually, there's certain data points missing. So that is visible in Appendix R one of Navigant, and the note says, the blue-shaded values reflected estimated prices for years where no data was reported. But that is nowhere acknowledged in the report and the slide which I've just shown you, and that I'm showing you again. Also, the electricity price studies have different assumptions and scenarios. For example, the share of renewables, they range between thirty-five percent and forty percent, or in cases of two, is not available. There are other things which I think is, that are much more, much better explained by the experts than by me, and I'm sure we will try to translate it in language that's understandable for lawyers in the post-hearing submissions. I put it to Mr. Kozmaric, this is in transcript eleven, twenty-nine, lines four to eleven, that the Aurora model is commercially available. And I asked him if he tried to obtain a license or see somebody who has a license to try it out. But his answer was, ten, I didn't try to use his license, nor did I try to obtain a license to use the model, no. I then asked him, eleven, thirty, lines nineteen to twenty-one, and eleven, thirty-one, lines one to thirteen, if he had consulted energy market pricing specialists within Navigant. And he said, I'm not aware of anybody who would be any better prepared to make electricity price projections than myself, frankly. And I asked him whether he asked his colleagues to point him to somebody in Europe. No, because I felt completely competent to be able to do the assessment myself. I've done power plant valuations all over the world. Eleven, thirteen, lines nineteen to twenty-two, eleven, thirty-one, lines one to thirteen. Indeed, there's more assumptions in Mr. Kozmaric's valuation that contradict the fourteen March valuation date. And you will recall that during the opening, that was at paragraph, at transcript twenty-six, twenty-one, lines eighteen to twenty, that no, that claimants say that no exposed information may be used in an ex ante scenario. Professor Huber stated, there's no basis in law or damages theory that to use lower exposed electricity prices in an ex ante valuation. That's what he said during his closing this morning. However, if we look at it, we will see that Mr. Kozmaric used exposed information. For example, for the shutdown of Brokdorf in two thousand and nineteen, even though it was allowed to run until two thousand and twenty-one and could have bought volumes. They're excluding those two and a half years from their model, which of course inflates the price. Now, if we are, if we, and that is one point where Professor Huber and I agree, that in an ex ante model, you are not allowed to use exposed information, he should have relied on NAV two, five, two, which shows the planning for Brokdorf, which does not support his contention, it would shut down in two thousand and nineteen. The midterm planning, midterm planning, not long-term planning, has data until two thousand and sixteen, but not beyond. So there was no information, or there's no information in the record as of two thousand and eleven indicating a shutdown in two thousand and nineteen. Let's see what he says in the transcript, that's eleven, forty-seven, lines eight to thirteen. So if we had, if I had better information from E.ON, knowing that they would actually do that, they would, were ready to buy volumes, and they're not, they said no twice. I would have incorporated that into my analysis, but right now, they're saying they're ready to shut down in two thousand and nineteen. Documents in the record contradict that. Instead, the evidence demonstrates that at least in late February, two thousand and eleven, shortly before Mr. Kozmaric's valuation date, Brokdorf intended to continue operations until twenty thirty-one. And this is NAV one, two, one, and you can see the figure two thousand and thirty-one here. And you've also heard me explain in my closing that claimant's contention, well, if you have to do a core refueling a year before the shutdown, you wouldn't do that. And I pointed you to the promotional video of Wattenfall, that in the annual revisions, you exchange a sixth of the elements. So it's again not what their counsel say, it doesn't have anything to do with what Wattenfall says in their promotional video. Mr. Kozmaric, and you've, you've heard that already today, argues that the OEPVs, the remaining ones, it's impossible to determine the fair market value. And he makes this point, well, if there's not a market now at the moment, there is no value to it. Transcript thirteen, eleven, thirty-nine, six to, six to fourteen. Question, I have a two-pronged question or two questions prompted by you. You say nobody wants to buy today, and therefore, they, that's the OPV, have presently no value. Answer by Mr. Kozmaric, correct. Answer by Mr. Kozmaric, "Correct question. So you've said before, post Fukushima, nobody would have wanted to buy any nuclear power plants. So as of your valuation date, they would have had a zero, a value zero." Answer, "I entirely disagree." That is before the background, that you're not allowed, that actually DCF method means that you have to value the present-day value of future cash flows. Moreover, they have suggested, claimants have suggested that somehow they should be awarded damages on the basis of a zero value of the OEPVs. And if later on, they can be sold, they want to put it in a trust for the government, et cetera. That is not an option, because it would open the door very wide to manipulation. And the reason for that is the merit order. If the OEPVs have a value zero, the claimants have received money for them already. They have no interest to sell them, to commercialize them, because every terawatt hour that is then produced in another nuclear plant pushes the merit order, i.e. takes away utilization from the commercial electricity-producing assets of claimants in E.ON. And bear in mind, claimants have 92% commercial, sorry, conventional electricity production. He then tries to create a market scenario in which there's an oversupply and therefore the volume's value is depressed. However, he's overlooking, Mr. Kozmaric is overlooking an important factor of market economy, as you can see from the next slide. And this is a demonstrative exhibit of respondent Exhibit 3 during the direct examination of Ms. Harden. And I recommend to you that you also read her answer to the questions posed with regard to this demonstrative exhibit. Because at the end of the commercial ability of the volume, so to speak, if there were a oversupply, let's suppose RWE depletes its remaining 18 before Wattenfall, then Wattenfall would have a seller monopoly and would therefore have monopolistic pricing powers over the buyers. This would allow them not to extract less value, but maybe more value per, well, indeed more value per terawatt. It could be in that situation that there would be stranded volumes, perhaps, but those volumes that would be commercialized would have a higher value. Again, this was in response to Mr. Kozmaric's critiques of Ms. Harden. But even in his scenario, when Wattenfall is the last seller in the market, that would not lead to Wattenfall's detriment.
Can I ask a question on this slide?
Yeah, absolutely.
The blue column of 99.2 terawatt hour. So that are, what is it, the Krummel and the?
Brunsbüttel, yeah.
Eighty-eight and eleven terawatts. But they are jointly, now I have to be very careful my words, what it is. Let's say owned with E.ON, isn't it? One in this thirty-seven, what is it? Also thirty-three percent, and the other one fifty percent. So this would then be sold to whom?
So, and I appreciate that the different permutations were a bit confusing.
No, no, but let me say, because, and the question, because you say monopolistic pricing power, but they sell then to E.ON. That's at least according to the game theory, if I understood it correctly, of Ms. Harden. So, but they are then partly selling to themselves, if I may grokly say this.
And that is what I was trying to explain by saying different permutations. The principle is, and this was respondent, is respondent's principal case, their partners. And down to the last megawatt hour or kilowatt hour, let's take Krummel for simplification purposes, each of them has an interest in commercializing it. Which is why we deduced from them that E.ON would give preferential treatment to energy volumes in which it had a stake, because it was in those situations on the buyer's side and on the seller's side, and therefore would have a vested interest in taking these first. Mr. Kozmaric disputed that and put out his, "Well, you don't know, they would maybe go in competition with RWE. RWE would underbid them, so E.ON would have an interest to buy from RWE rather than from its partner, Wattenfall." We disputed that, because obviously they are partners. Except if, you know, they have an ulterior motive in order, and with the price tag of 1.8 billion. But that Exhibit 3 is in direct response to Mr. Kozmaric's scenario, well, they would take first everything from RWE, and then there would be stranded volumes, et cetera. That even, you know, going down the garden path with Mr. Kozmaric, and even assuming that Wattenfall would be the last seller, you know, RWE would manage to underbid Wattenfall and get its volumes sold to E.ON first. Then you would have, so you would have 103 minus 18 compared to 99. And you bear with me for being exact in my math, which I shouldn't be. So you have a demand roughly of 87 on E.ON's side, if I'm not mistaken. And 99 in supply. So there would be an oversupply of a bit more than 10%. Now, it could be that even in this ultimate Kozmaric situation, that there would be a tiny bit of about 10% that would be stranded. But for the 90%, Wattenfall would have monopolistic pricing power. And it is quite, under the game theory, reasonable to assume that for these 90%, it would use its market powers to get at least the step-up of 10% and would come out even. So this one is a response scenario, as you know. The principal case is still their partners down to the last kilowatt hour, which would motivate and should motivate E.ON to give preferential treatment, so to speak, to its partner, Wattenfall. Not just because it's a nice company, but because they have a vested interest in each of the terawatt hours. I see that I have 30 minutes left. May I proceed? I will not take you through little figures, but you can read that for yourself on the transfers. He, when it suits him, uses exposed information, if it doesn't, he doesn't. So we have the question 18 about the three valuation dates. And we have, sorry, 16, not 18. The three valuation dates and the table, which of course shows you that claimants have disregarded Fukushima in their scenarios. They have treated, made the moratorium part of their actual, but not of their BUT4, which means that they're treating it as a measure even though it's not part of the arbitration. And for 6 August 2011, there is actually no valuation available by claimants. Let me now take you to the, what the backfits and costs that would be occasioned by Fukushima, but which claimants ignore. You remember the missing projects of Grauff, Transcript 1795, line 1 to 8. And the project descriptions that were misleading, 1679, 229. And Dr. Grauff's explanations of the ultimate heat sink, or the ultimate heat sink, as he pronounces it, which is actually the River Elbe. And actually, they, claimants admitted, both in their opening and in their closing, that they anticipated stricter safety requirements following Fukushima. And still, you remember that extensive discussion about whether or not earthquakes have to be modeled in. And I'm skipping those slides, which you can obviously read for yourself. But it suffices to say that the only plant that would have been allowed to operate had Krummel been allowed to continue operating, that would not have had N plus two, four earthquakes, would have been Krummel. So it is very likely that it would have been asked in the BUT4 scenario to implement additional earthquake precautions, even in the absence of the Thirteenth Amendment. Then a brief overview of the discussion about the restart date. The, and I think you can see for yourself what Dr. Klosters has testified. And indeed, the document they pointed you, and I'm now on, yes, on this slide, which they discussed, I believe, the day, yesterday, the day before yesterday, which is R264, that some nuclear reserve was being discussed. Well, this was an emergency measure in the context of the first winter and how we could get over it, and it was ultimately not used. Such an emergency situation has nothing to do with the usual restart date after the compliance of the reliability proceedings, which of course have to encompass all three elements, technology, human, and organization. The exchange of fuel elements. Professor Eva, who was here to testify, was not asked about that by respondents, by claimants. And I commend his opinion to you, and also the report by Mr. Gottsinger, who explains quite clearly that what was done was an exchange of fuel elements and that even more extensive than the 1/6 exchange that Wattenfall was mentioning in its promotional video. It was, every fuel element had to be handled, that's more than the 1/6 of the promotional video. Moreover, they never submitted a application and never employed any legal remedies. And as you know, this is only relevant for Krummel, as Brunsbüttel was not to restart even in claimant's case. Indeed, if you look at the expert testimony, which claimants did not evaluate in their closing submissions, you will see that the claimant's expert did not provide an independent valuation of the costs of decommissioning or of the measures for retrofitting that were necessary, but that they were looking only at Wattenfall's own data, which they just accepted. And you will see the overview slide by Ms. Harden, what Wattenfall did and did not do. There's also in the next slide, which you can see, the exposed events listed that Mr. Kozmaric used. This is quite an interesting slide, I think. The result was, would be that if done properly, you would come to the conclusion that there was no negative impact by the measures on the claimants. I'm now turning to question 17 and the Development Fund Agreement and the settlement agreement. You will recall the slides from the opening, that claimants for three months ignored the settlement, even though they bear the burden of proof for all of their claims, and they also have a duty to the tribunal to inform it of any changes downwards for the, because otherwise they overstate their claim, which in some jurisdictions, including Germany, has a very bad word, which I'm not going to utter, but you know exactly what I mean. It was only on 7 October, prompted by respondent, that claimants said something about the settlement. And the letter was pretty callous, did not defend the oversight by claimants, and says, "The simple fact that there has been a settlement in relation to a claim of a few million euros, which does not affect the basis of claimants' claim in this arbitration. Very minor adjustment of the amount by less than 5%." Now, if you look at what Mr. Kozmaric actually did in relation to the settlement, was that he even now does not take in account of it. What he just changed was, he figured out, because he saw the settlement, that he had made mistakes in calculation, calculating the development fund contribution. So his corrections are not corrections for the effect of the settlement, but corrections prompted by his recognition that he had made a mistake, which was independent of the settlement agreement. That's Transcript 1166, line 5 to 11, 1167, lines 3 to 13. And also Professor Houbert this morning, 2608, line 13. The next one is something we will explain in much more detail in the post-hearing submissions, and that's the situation relative to the decommissioning costs. It is very technical indeed, but... I'm getting an email, a note by my more mathematically talented people, asking Lindsay for an overview of time, because I think what they want to tell me is that I should mention some of it, rather than skip through it.
Technically, you have 26 minutes left.
I think I'm seeing that I'm being directed not to skip over it and force the tribunal to endure more discussion of figures rather than legal principles, so bear with me. And it was, to be fair, in reply to a question by the tribunal on decommissioning costs. What is decommissioning? Decommissioning is an umbrella expression which covers three phases. The post-operational phase, the nuclear decommissioning, and the conventional demolition. All that is under the umbrella of decommissioning, which basically goes from stopping of the plant until the greenfield. And the tribunal, and I remember also the question by the president during claimant's closing, is, "How do you explain those differences?" Because the amounts in, what we say, what respondents say, decommissioning costs, between 700 and 800 million, and the figures that you're given by claimants, which exceed 1 billion, that is a combined per plant, which is a combined difference of a nominal value only of 300 million, but they become 600 million in the damages calculation. So basically, they're double. And this step-up is not just because of an alleged, "It takes longer," et cetera, which is also a separate point, which you need to investigate. It is also a function of the time value of money. And I can point you to, and this is the time value of money, but let's look at the historic data and the comparisons. If you look at the next slide, which is from Mr. Seiler's summary presentation, Slide 8, he lists the reasonable average and the expected historic data financial provisions for each plant. And what you can see is that there's an average for, I'm sorry, RWE boiling water reactors of 850 of... of Energie Baden-Württemberg boiling water of about a billion, and his estimation of eight hundred and twenty for Krummel and Brunsbyttel. These are contrasted with Wattenfall's projections for KKK of one point four billion and for Brokdorf of one point one billion. So you can see, just by looking at this, how Wattenfall's projections differ from the ones of its competitors. And I think to that slide, I will speak... Will not speak, because that's too complicated. But I will show you something else. And that is the review of claimants' decommissioning costs for Brokdorf. And what you can see, the blue line represents Mr. Kazmarek's projections. There's a huge unexplained spike in the year 2025. That is still unexplained, and it's something for which claimants bear the burden of proof. It's not what you see in other power plants. So the assumptions include, that are wrong for Brokdorf, that it starts in 2019 rather than 21, the incorrect duration of the post-operational phase on the basis of Mr. Tomausk's assertions regarding the MOX elements, which is wrong, the incorrect duration of the nuclear decommissioning phase, which can be performed in ten years. You will also recall the claimants' discussion of experts' smokescreens. Well, that wasn't our experts. Let's look... Give it a closer look. They first only submitted the Charles One report, which, if you remember his cross-examination, and we have a few snippets from it in the slides, shows you that he did not do a substantive review per the scope of the engagement. He was, in fact, asked to do a very high-level assessment only of the methodology and not... Did not look at any data. Then, secondly, the green line depicts the report by respondent, which criticized that the Charles report was without value. What did Wattenfall do in reply? They submitted the second Charles report, which was a mere four-point-five pages, which admits that he has no knowledge of the regulatory framework and recurs to instructions to limit the review again to a high level, and then deflects to other experts. Mr. Huckle is one of the other experts. Also, he doesn't comment on Wattenfall's cost estimate. He has no confirmation of claimants' cost estimate, no explanations of the assumptions of claimants' cost estimates, no criticism of Mr. Seiler's cost estimate, and no rebuttal of any of Mr. Seiler's criticisms regarding Charles... Mr. Charles. And he was asked all that in cross-examination. Most telling is perhaps this passage, which is transcript eight-two-four, line five to fifteen, and eight-two-four, twenty-two, to eight-two-five-four. Question: And in your report, you on several occasions stressed that the Mülheim-Kerlich nuclear power plant is comparable to the Krummel nuclear power plant with regard to important aspects of decommissioning. And bear in mind, he was the head of decommissioning, Mr. Huckle of Mülheim-Kerlich. He was then asked, "With those statements in mind, shouldn't you be perfectly able to speak to claimants' assertions with regard to costs?" Answer: Yeah, that's possible, that I might be able to do so, but I did not do that. Next expert, Mr. Tomausk... Professor Tomausk, who was let go after the problems in Krummel and for whom a professor chair was created by the nuclear industry as to sweeten his career change. Now, he tries to extend the post-operational phase from four to seven and a half years and then assumes a linear relationship between costs and duration. As you've heard from Mr. Seiler, linearity is something that he didn't find in the underlying data. But it goes further. The Thirteenth Amendment does not require a prolongation of the post-operational period. Then there's no validation by claimants' experts of claimants' contention regarding NIS. NIS is an input assumption. An NIS only takes the data received from the operators without questioning it. Then, they say, there were no reason... Well, the Thirteenth Amendment did not provide reasons for delay to file the decommissioning license. There was no start-from-scratch required, because under the 2002 phase-out already, claimants knew that those plants would have to be phased out. So they must have had concepts in the drawer. There are no constraints at the resources at the supervisory authority level. It wasn't that the supervisory authority was flooded with applications and therefore had no time to handle it. The delay for the filing of the decommissioning license was motivated by Wattenfall's own business decision, probably also before the background of this arbitration and the constitutional court proceedings. The argument that management was surprised and had to do that without proper preparation, that is actually a scary proposition, because management needs to be able to deal with unexpected events. And Mr. Carter's gave you a very vivid impression of what he had to fight with after the German reunification. This next table shows you how long Krummel was prolonged with its decommissioning application as compared to the other plants. All of them were either in 2012 or in April 2013. Wattenfall did not file it until two years and four months after the last of the other ones. As Mr. Seiler explained, it is perfectly possible to... And also, Mr. Gottsinger explained, it's perfectly possible to start decommissioning with fuel in the plants and also to remove fuel before the decommissioning license is granted. We talked about the castor containers. The last necessary permit for putting fuel in the castors was received in July 2016. It is not true, as Wattenfall suggests, that there was a shortage of castors, there was a license missing for the castors, which would have made the delay in applying for decommissioning irrelevant. As to the proposition of you can start decommissioning with fuel in the plant, the most graphic depiction of that is the image that Mr. Carter showed in his summary presentation on slide seven. And the tribunal president noted that the person in the photo is wearing normal work protective gear, but by no means what you would expect and what you know from films, documentaries, on harshly... In harshly contaminated areas, the huge protective gear. He's not wearing that. This image shows that decommissioning with fuel in the plant can go on even in very close neighborship and with people in the plant, that they are not looking like the proverbial Michelin man. Lastly, even if the post-operational period would extend, this would not lead to a linear increase of costs. The Seiler report, paragraph two-ten, gives you a table of which elements would be linear and which would be constant or sublinear. And the only item that's linear is storage. Moreover, there's an artificial increase of personnel costs if you look at the 2011-ness as compared to the 210-ness. That is unexplained. And again, claimants bear the burden of proof. That is an increase of personnel of roughly eight-hundred-person years if you compare the two tables. That is by no means trivial. And again, there was no explanation for that. There were also... There was also a clear lack of transparency as to the costs of waste management. And again, claimants bear the burden of proof, and they have not met it in the least. Let me conclude with a discussion of the burden of proof. And as I said, there are not many things on which the parties agree in this arbitration, but there's one thing that we do agree on in this arbitration. Transcript day one, one-nine-one, lines six to eleven, where Professor Houbert answered a question from the president. "Mr. Chairman, as respondent pointed out, we have the burden of proof. So if we make a bad calculation, that is in our risk. If we are bad at explaining what we have done, that is our problem, not their problem." And claimants have also repeatedly admitted that they bear the burden of proof. And also, respondent has pointed to that fact so many times that I'm hesitant to read out all the citations I have on my speaking notes. Claimants bear the burden of proof; they have not met it. They have made a bad calculation; this is their risk. They're bad at explaining their claims; that is their problem. It is not respondent's. Indeed, respondent's has... And respondent's need in this arbitration... First of all, if... First of all, claimants have, even unassisted by respondent, not met their burden of proof, and therefore even had respondent been absolutely silent in this arbitration, not submitted a shred of evidence, a shred of paper, claimant's arbitration would fail. But respondent's has submitted an impact analysis, which is sufficient to create doubt as to claimants' prognosis and estimations. And that shows, in fact, that the impact is negative. At least, there's no negative impact, meaning that the claimants are actually better if... Or at least not worse off than without the measures. But make no mistake, respondent bears no burden of proof on proving or disproving the impact. The burden of proof for proving that there's jurisdiction, that there have been breaches, that the claimants are indeed proper claimants, that they've made investments, that they suffered damage, that is all on claimants, not on respondent. You've heard the story about the portfolio effect, which we allegedly only raised over the summer, which is completely wrong. This has been the basis for respondent's document production requests early on in this arbitration, 2012, or maybe 2013, I believe. Since then, claimants were warned that there is an argument on the portfolio effect, and they've not responded to it. And again, we're not arguing an offset or something. We are pointing out a whole, in claimant's case, a failure to substantiate their claims. Because as Philip Morris explained, after we've made actually the same argument, which they could not have possibly known, is that if you have the same business activity, which in the case of claimants is the production of nuclear... Of energy, of electricity, you have to look at the effects of the measures on that business. And that business is not nuclear energy. It's an integrated electricity company, and the means of producing electric energy are interrelated by virtue of the merit order. So anything that affects lignite production, electricity production, would have repercussions on coal steam, on nuclear. Any regulation that affects nuclear would affect also lignite and steam coal and gas and water. It's one product. Again, as I've used it before, if you put the plug of your iPad in the socket, it will get electricity, and it doesn't care if it comes from nuclear or lignite or steam coal. Therefore, it's one product, one market, one business, which was allegedly, according to claimants, affected by the Thirteenth Amendment. But they have failed for the last four years to explain that effect. Instead, they're trying to make you believe that their only investment is, well, a hundred percent in a power plant that they only own fifty percent of, but completely ignore the rest of Wattenfall's investment in Germany, which is in an integrated electricity company. So claimant's case must fail, because there's no jurisdiction for claims on behalf of E.ON. There's no jurisdictions for claims on the basis of the nuclear fuel tax. There's no breach of the Energy Charter Treaty as a result of the measures, and there's no financial impact. And by definition, where there's no adverse financial impact, there can also be no damages for which claimants bear the full burden of proof. Thank you very much.
That completes the closing argument for the respondent. I'm looking at the parties for the rebuttals. We have scheduled thirty minutes each. Are the full thirty minutes needed?
Sorry, from our side, I don't think we need thirty minutes, but we would like to have five to ten minutes now to confer a bit, but...
That I understand, but that was my second question.
Yeah, I don't think we need thirty minutes. That's not needed.
As long as the cumulative pauses doesn't carry us past seven-thirty, I'm happy with that.
Okay. I suggest we have a fifteen-minute break before we prepare. And then we resume at, say, at quarter past six, a little bit later, but let's try to be back at quarter past six.